Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the Monday, July 1 business meeting. Actually, I guess we're having a combined work session business meeting for the Cabarrus County Board of Education. With that said, we need to set the agenda. So I'd ask for a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Oh, wait a minute.
I'd like to...
Motion's been withdrawn.
Yes, I would like to add one item to the agenda. If I could add the one item I'd like to add to put, now I don't know how to word this, to change the filing date for the Board of Education. If I could add that to the agenda.
Okay, so you want to add, since we only have one meeting, we're going to add it to the action agenda and have discussion and a vote tonight to change the filing date for Board of...
I mean Board of Education.
Okay. Now, we don't have authority to change the date, so you're actually asking to do, to add that, to get a petition or a resolution made?
Well, it'd be a resolution that we would send to our legislators. We need to send it to Senator Hartzell and our delegation, House delegation. And what they would do is they would have to do a bill in Raleigh, and we can discuss that. I have spoke with Senator Hartzell.
Okay, I have a motion. Is there a second?
So moved, second.
Okay, there's a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Aye, okay, the ayes have it. We'll make that 7.8 on our action agenda resolution. Okay, with that said, the agenda, I guess we need to adopt the revised agenda. Okay, so do I have a motion to adopt the revised agenda?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we now have an agenda. We're moving right along. And we'll go to 3.1 and ask for Ms. Kathy Argar to come to the podium.
Good evening. Courtney Smith is our Cabarrus County Schools 2013-14 Teacher of the Year and our Board's new teacher liaison for 2013-14. She's a middle grades English Language Arts teacher currently serving at CC Griffin Middle School. It's important to note that Courtney began with Cabarrus County Schools in 2008 as a teacher assistant at Wolfmeadow Elementary, earned her graduate certificate in teaching from UNCC, and accepted a position teaching English Language Arts at Mount Pleasant Middle School. She serves under schools leadership team at Mount Pleasant Middle, I'm sorry, she serves under schools leadership team, and she's the AIG chairperson for English Language Arts. She's the assistant coach for the softball and the track teams at her school. Courtney is married and has two daughters. Please join me in welcoming Courtney as teacher liaison to our Board of Education meeting as she takes her seat with the board.
It's not every day you get your chair pulled out by a guy wearing a purple seersucker jacket, and I can tell you that. Courtney, welcome. We look forward to working with you this year and your comments and insight from what's going on in the classroom, and we're happy to have you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next, Board members, we'll go on to our approval of the minutes, 4.1. We've got three. I think we can do them all at one time, or do we have to do them separately? I think we can do them all at one time, can't we? Okay.
I can only vote on the first one. I wasn't at the other two meetings.
Okay, well, then we'll, that's right. Do I have a motion to approve the June 3 work session minutes?
So moved.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? That passes, and then we'll do the next two together with Dr. Phillips refraining. Do I have a motion to approve the June 10 and the June 27 business meeting minutes?
So moved.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, Ms. Monroe, you got all that? All right. Next, Section 5, Reports, 5.1. We'll ask Ronnie Boone up to the podium to discuss our new webpage, which I believe made its grand debut today.
Earlier today, we launched our newly designed, or newly redesigned, website for Cabarrus County Schools. We've got it pulled up here on the large monitors, and I just wanted to give you a little bit of a tour of the new site and also to share a little bit of background information with you about how we got to this design. Our former web content provider, which was School Center, was purchased by another company last year, and they notified us that they were no longer going to support the web content product that we knew as School Center. So at that time, we began to go looking for a new provider for our web content management and also decided that after four years of living with the design that we had, that it was also time to redesign the site as well. We developed a cross-functional team that included my department, representation from curriculum and instruction, and representation from our technology department, as well as four technology facilitators from our schools to work on selecting a new provider for our web content management tool. After several meetings with four different companies, we settled on School Wires, which is a firm that provides web content management as well as a learning management system for school systems and other government agencies across the country as well as abroad. The new product, School Wires, features robust functionality and very pleasing content displays. It also has more intuitive navigation than our previous site, and a variety of other features, like I mentioned before, the learning management side of it, which we will begin to pilot in the fall when school is back in session. We began training with our technology facilitators back in the spring for them to develop their school sites and build their school sites. We also began training in June for our department content providers and those website managers, and that work, I'm happy to say, is well underway in the department sites as well as our school sites. Some of our school sites are going, are very far along in their design and are pretty much up and ready at this point, or will be very soon, as well as some of the department sites, and with others planning to come onboard in early August before the school year starts. So at this point, I would like to just walk you through a little bit of our new site just so you can see what all is there. I want to say just in general, the new site features certainly a brighter design than what we had before. You'll see a lot more color, it's a lot lighter looking and feeling than what we had before. There's more space for content on the front page, so we've got a lot more real estate there. We are able to populate that with more information and not have to pull something off in order to put something else up, which was one of the limitations of the design that we had in the past. We also have the opportunity, we still have the opportunity to feature large photos in that very first photo box at the top of the page. Our photos and the quality of our photos is something that people have talked about in terms of liking about our site, and so this design gives us an opportunity to showcase more than just one photo on the front page at a time. We can have multiple images running at the same time. I would like to mention to you that that photo box also is able to hold video images, so you can embed a video there if the need arises to have something play from that point on the front page, which was also something that we did not have the capability to do before. So when you're looking at the side, at the very top left-hand corner, you'll see our logo, and you will also see our tagline, the Clear Choice there. Directly across from that, on the right, is what we call global icons. These will appear on all of the site pages, and there are three there. Connect, which puts the visitor in touch with all of our district connections from social media. Calendars, which will feature our academic calendar, the Board of Education calendar, as well as our testing calendar, so that parents and students can keep up with that. And then the final icon there is our cafeteria information where you can find the menus when school is in session, and then also an online payment button that will take you to make online payments. Going back over to the left-hand side, you will notice a little house. That's the home button, so when you're on another page, you can click there and go back to the front page very easily. The magnifying glass is our search button, of course, which is pretty traditional for most sites. And then we've got our district, where you'll find information about, general information about Cabarrus County Schools, maps and directions to the education center, and we'll also populate that information, that section, with directions to our other facilities as well. The departments listing is pretty self-explanatory, but I would like to highlight the fact that if you click on all district departments, that will take you to an alphabetized directory of all the departments. In our previous site, the departments were listed by our organizational function, which was not necessarily intuitive for the way that someone outside of Cabarrus County Schools would think of something. So the alphabetized listing will help people hopefully find information faster. If you scroll on down, I just want to pull up one department page, pull up our department page, Mike, please. This is the Public Relations Department page. We're still in the process of populating our left-hand navigation there, but what we do have here is a list of all the links to all the graduation video recordings that folks can look at if they want to go back and look at a graduation video. The navigation on this page will also have links to our annual report, our inclement weather policy, all the information that was already there before. We just, we had been focused on working on the front page and have not had a chance to build out our department page at this particular time. Scroll over to the Board of Education tab, please, which is where you'll find all of your information, your photos, your contact information. Scroll back up. On the navigation, you'll have a link to Board Docs so that folks can look at the agendas for the meetings, your calendar for the upcoming year, as well as a link to the meeting videos that we have posted. Under the Employment tab, we will have, it takes you to the Human Resources Department page, which is very far along in their process of building out their information, and they've got their left-hand navigation populated with lots of good HR-type information, everything from vacancies and applications to information for beginning teachers and volunteers as If we go back to the homepage and scroll down a little bit, underneath the large photo section, we have right now a welcome message that welcomes folks to our new website and encourages them to spend some time looking around and familiarizing themselves with the information. In the Announcement section, we have a short article about the fact that we've switched over to School Wires and that we do have this new website. The Announcement section, this is not something that is meant to have information that stays up for a very long time. It's information that is more, meant for, information that's more timely, need-to-know information for a specific period of time. We can include more than one announcement in this section right now. We just have that one because of the new website. To the right of that is our District Headlines feature, which is very similar to what we have before, and we can, we will, you know, as the school year goes on, we'll certainly have more headlines in that box and that will rotate in and out. Moving on over, we've got a calendar function that lists upcoming events. First day of school is where we're starting, and holidays, and all the information that is on a typical calendar, you'll find there listed by the day. Just above that box, I skipped the Quick Links, I'm sorry, is our Quick Links section where we will have, where we have information about all the things that people may need right at their fingertips, may need to have right at their fingertips and want to go to. So that list will obviously grow as the school year goes on, but for right now, we've populated it with just a few of those items. Can we scroll down? Across the bottom, we've got our contact information and our legal information, which we, you know, also had on our site before. And then the box, the columns to the right of that, Students, Parents, Community, Employee Links, those are the same type of sections that we had with the roll-up tabs before on our website, if you will recall. And that information, again, will be pulled over, those links will be pulled over to build that section out. There's another functionality of that piece that we can also do. We can also add photographs there to make that a more interesting visual element, and so as we have opportunities to do that, you may log on and see that there are photos in those sections as well as the links that are there. And then the final thing that I wanted, oh, no, not the final thing, I'm sorry. Another thing I wanted to mention to you, back up at the top, Mike, I'm sorry.
It's not populating right now.
Is it not there?
Something with the browser.
Okay.
They probably can see it on there.
You may be able to see it on your monitors, but there is a Translate page tab across the, near the top of your page. It should be, well, you have it? Great. That is a very neat feature that School Wires offers that allows you to choose a language, and you can translate the page that you're on for that particular, it'll translate the page for you, and there are several different language options listed there that they have translated for you, or that the browser will translate for you. And then the final thing I wanted to mention to you, which is something that we did not have before with the design that we had before, but we do now, is that this website design is able to be viewed on a variety of devices, and it will be, it's viewable in a format that you can actually read. So if you wanted to pull it up on your smartphone, you can pull it up on your smartphone, and it will fit the screen of your smartphone. You won't have to, the words won't run off the page or scroll forever. It will fit into that screen. If you've got a tablet, it'll do the same thing on a tablet. If you've got an iPad tablet, it'll do that. If you've got more like an e-reader type tablet, it'll conform to fit that screen as well, as well as, of course, a computer monitor or something like that. So we're excited about that feature because we think that's something that people will enjoy, because we know that most times folks are looking at our website on the go. They're not necessarily sitting at home or sitting at a computer in an office or at a desk that they can log on and look at our website. So we just wanted to give you a quick overview of the site, and know that we will continue to add and tweak and move things around until we get it absolutely 100% right. Like I said before, the design that we had before was four years old, so, you know, it's time for a new, it was time for a new design. But of course, whenever you change anything, there's always some bumps in the road, and there's always some resistance from people who are saying, "Well, I can't find so-and-so, and I can't find this, and I can't find that." And we will certainly work through all that with everyone, but we think that we are certainly moving in the right direction with this new design.
Fantastic. Well, that is a lot of work, I mean, it's obviously, and thank you very much for that presentation. Board members, does anybody have a comment or a question? You hit the one question I had about compatibility with other devices, so I don't have anything else, but any comments? Yeah, okay, go ahead, Mr. Phillips.
Well, this is a nice step forward, and I know it was a lot of work, as Blake said, but it's vital in today's culture. This is the window that we have to so many of the people in our district. This is what they will see. This is the face of our district, so we need to make sure that it looks good, and that all the information we want is there. And I'll give you some feedback for mine offline, but the one question I had for you is, do you have enough resources to get done what you want done, to get this website to the point where you want it to be?
People resources, sir?
People, money, computers, whatever.
We, the product is paid for. We've purchased the product. We signed a contract with our technology department taking the lead on that for us. But from a standpoint of people resources, we, you know, our department is standing here in front of you. It's me and Mike. So from a standpoint of needing more hands to help to keep the site the way that we wanted to look, to put on the best face possible, that's certainly something that we would always welcome. So that's a quick answer to your question.
Now, for the individual school websites, I assume that the responsibility for that flows down to the individual schools?
Yes, to the technology facilitators at the schools.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Harrison?
Thank you again. It's always marvelous work that you're doing. We appreciate it, and I'll, regarding my photograph on one page, I'll tell you what I'll tell my barber. You did the best you could with what you had to work for, work with. Thank you all for the really great work that you're doing there. My questions would be, for the audience, if you'll click on your homepage, I don't know if you did that earlier, but the Our Schools tab at the top that expands?
You can't see it on your...
It does show on our browser, and that's why I did not mention that to you.
Okay, but that shows again at the top.
Yes, it does, and it's a listing of all the schools.
Of all the schools, and that's really neat. That's quite good. I'm sure it's in the works, or it will be there, but I don't yet see a link to the policy.
Yes.
And that will, of course, make its way there.
This is just day one.
Day one, for sure. Is the, is the website sufficient for employment purposes in terms of communication with applicants? So that's already been fast-tracked in terms of that segment of...
Yes, sir. HR was the, one of the first departments to raise their hands and say, "We've got to have ours ready when the district site is ready."
Right.
So they have worked very hard, Kathy and her folks in her department have worked very hard to get their site built out so that today, when we turn the switch over, that they were ready to go.
Okay, and thank you all for prioritizing that. The one thing that has been used quite a lot lately is some kind of Contact Us form, which possibly isn't, I don't quite see it here yet, but quite a lot of contact was made to us in the last few months using that previous functionality.
And that's not going to go away. We will still have that in multiple places. We will continue with the Contact the Board link that we have had in the past. We also have a contact, there's a contact for me, there's a contact for the webmaster, there's a contact for the superintendent. None of those contact buttons or links, I should say, will disappear.
Right. I would just urge that those be placed very high, very visible, very accessible.
Absolutely.
The most prevalent location is right there under Quick Links. It's not, I turned it off today because I'm building that out, and I just didn't want it to show up and somebody attempt to contact us and not get the appropriate response, not go to the right location. Yes, sir. It'll be, it'll be in that list under Quick Links. It is not there now. I made it inactive for today until I had that built out.
My turn. I think it's attractive. I think it's visually attractive. I like the graphics. I think the Translate page, that's a pretty nice feature to have. But if you're saying it doesn't work on that particular browser, would it make sense to move that All Schools down under the, into the orange tab?
It's not displaying correctly because this is, there's a resolution issue that I haven't figured out with this laptop and the televisions in this room. It displays correctly on your laptop.
Right.
And it displays correctly on our desktop, but this seems to be a unique situation just between this...
I mean, there might be other folks out there that are having problems that can't display that black line up on top.
I haven't heard that yet, but I'll definitely, something I'll definitely look into.
Just in case, I mean, if it's not, I think it's easy to bring it down, but if not, that's fine.
We'll check into that. I did, I do want to say that this design is a template design, so there are parts of the design that we can't move around. There are some parts that we can, and that's, that is the trade-off, I guess, I would say, for purchasing a template design versus having a custom design done by your in-house designer, which is what our former site was, because that was designed by Mike, versus purchasing a template kind of off the shelf from a company so that you can leverage the consistency factor across all of your designs. And that was one of the things that we were, was one of our big priorities for this entire project, was to bring some consistency to all of our websites from the school level on up to the district level.
Yeah, my point is just one of the things that we want to highlight is our schools, so you want to make sure that people can reach the different schools that we have.
Absolutely. But you can see, you can see it from your laptop.
I have no problem seeing it.
Yeah, I think it's a podium issue.
And I think it's nice that we can, all these devices, if it works for those devices too, that's a good thing. But just the fact that we're having one issue here, it might, someone else might be having an issue there with the browser or something.
And we'll check on that, for sure.
Absolutely.
The other comment I would make is some of these links here we have, we take people off our website to those links, and we probably should just open up a new window. And I was saying, the calendar being one of those, that when you go to the Board Calendar, and you click on Calendar, it takes you off the website to, instead of open up a new window, which is probably something we'd keep people so they don't have to keep hitting the backspace. And my only other suggestion is under Connect, I think we ought to add our LinkedIn page, because a lot of folks use that for employment purposes, and that might be a nice one to have up there.
That's a, that's a good idea. We didn't have the LinkedIn page when we built the initial design, so thank you for that reminder.
Well, job well done, and...
Great. Obviously, what's going to happen a lot over the next month or two is a lot of feedback, just like that. It's a very good suggestion. So maybe once school gets back in session and you really, you know, parents are back in the swing of things and it's really up and running, maybe prepare something and come back to us and say, "Hey, here's what we changed and did, and here's why we did what we did." And, you know, at that time, maybe you've heard of people that have had that problem, but at that point, if you haven't heard, then yeah, it's probably not out there. But anyway... if you haven't heard, then yeah, it's probably not out there. But anyway, overall, well done. We'll continue on. Ms. Carpenter?
She knows the one I want. Do they have the scholarship connection on there?
That will be there. It will be there. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
So, they will be able to get that connected and everything?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Because that's the one that I always look for, and will it be as easy to connect as it would?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's the one that I look for. Okay, as long as that one's there, that's the one I like. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Schumaker?
Well, as everyone else has said, great job, and I really appreciate what you've done. I actually like this site because it looks like it's a lot more versatile than what you had before, and I know for what Mike had to do on the other one, he probably had a lot of programming to do each item. But as I go through it, I find that there's some, there's some issues that are still glowing on, so I'm sure you're aware of a lot of the windows that if you stay on one too long, it pops a square up and kind of blocks you, at least only the top three where the Connect, the Calendars, and the Cafeterias. If you hang around it too much, it'll start, or at least it starts glitching out on this one, on this laptop that I have. But I'm sure it'll be, you'll be experimenting with it all summer long and you'll have a lot of learning curve with it, so I know you guys will resolve whatever issues you can come up with. So, good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Courtney, would you like to make any comments on the website or how, any feedback that you, under normal circumstances, get from parents or how they use the website?
I do know that teachers are very excited about the functionality that we're about to get. That is something that we've been working on, and we're very excited about the possibilities of new communication that we're going to be able to use. So, teachers are really excited about this.
Good. All right. Well, I think that's it. Thank you very much. We certainly appreciate it, and we'll look forward to continuing to explore and browse on our site, and I'm sure we will not be short of suggestions.
I promise I won't hide the feedback, but I'll make that promise.
Okay. One quick thing that I forgot to do, and that was to recognize our School Resource Officer, and tonight we do have Officer Andrew Thousand from Mount Pleasant Middle School here with us, and we certainly appreciate you being here. We appreciate all the hard work that you do out at Mount Pleasant Middle. Thank you. Okay, board members, we'll go move on to 5.2, QSCB Financial Update, and we'll have Ms. Kelly Clutch, the podium.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm going to call your attention to the far right column on this report, the balance remaining, and I want you just to scroll down there and look at all of those little dashes which indicate zero. We, after this board meeting, and hopefully you'll approve the budget request amendment that we're asking you to do, you'll see that we are, we are down to the wire on getting these projects completed. Very few remaining, and what we're going to do tonight is ask you, because we do not have a formal budget, you can't approve a formal budget amendment, but we're going to ask you to move these funds from one project to another by your vote in a letter format, and then when the budget is established, if you agree to that, then we'll establish it that way. So, it's basically the same thing as a budget amendment. What we're going to ask you to do, and Lynn is going to present, we've already talked about the J. and Free's roof and those bids and the way that they come in. We'll need $86,600 more to be able to take care of that bid and resolve that. Can you make it a little bit bigger? I can't see it too good. To be able to move forward with that project. The other project that came in over budget were the Mount Pleasant boilers, so we're asking you to move $40,000 from the electrical panel testing and corrections and safety equipment, $40,000 from that project, and $46,000 from, keep going down, Kelly. From right there, from the Coltrane Web Kitchen Hood modifications, and those dollars for the roof are coming from the $46,000 and the $40,000, and then the funds for the Mount Pleasant boilers coming from the, I think I just switched those. Hang on just a minute. So, the $114,000 for the roof is coming from the Northwest Field Projects, and the other two budget amendments, it's coming from the Kitchen Hood modifications and the panel, the electrical panel will be moving to the roof project, and that'll get us in line. We will also continue to do the Kitchen Hood modifications. We're going to do that out of Facilities and Operations Funds. We committed to those projects, and so we'll still do all the projects that we committed to. Okay, I'll report, questions on this report?
Okay, board members. I just had a thought. Would it be easier to, well, I don't know. It may be easier to hear about the details of the projects and the bids in Lynn's report and then ask questions about both all at one time. Does that make sense to anybody else? Okay.
It does, and we're not approving the budget. This is not the budget amendment portion, and it's later, but yes, I agree.
Right, we're voting on that later, so, okay. Well, why don't we go ahead and ask Mr. Wickie to come to the podium, and we'll talk about 5.3, the milestones, and then that way, anybody that has questions about those specific projects that Kelly just mentioned, Lynn might be able to answer, and it may make some of that a little more clear.
Good evening. With the milestones, can you bring that up a little bit, Kelly? I know it's, I wish I could just move, yeah. No, that's fine, that's fine. We'll start at the top and simply say, with Cabarrus High School, Central Cabarrus High School, the windows north continue to linger. There's only about $8,000 left in that project. Unfortunately, we're not able to close it out because we have a slow lingering relationship with the GC, and that's, we're working through their bonding company right now to try and close it out. So, as soon as we can, we will. I'm hopeful that it will occur in the next few months, but I don't know. We'll wait and see. I don't know. Mark, do you have an opinion on that at this point, or?
In terms of how long it's likely to take?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't have a good sense of that.
Yeah. It's hard to call because they're trying to work things out with their creditors, and they won't let us pay them another dime, so we're sort of stuck in the middle. But I do know that we're going to pay somebody by April 1st of next year, regardless of who gets the money. We will get that paid up and finished, so. And that's just, it's just a part of the business that you don't plan on getting involved with, but occasionally you do. With Northwest Gym, that project's moving along. The weather certainly slowed progress on the addition, but I do know that they've continued to work towards enclosing that portion of the work, of the project, and of course, the interior work did not get affected by the weather, and that's going along well. That does have a completion date of the end of August, and that may be pushed a little bit because of the weather delays, but we'll see how that all goes. Coltrane Web, the Kitchen Hood, as Kelly mentioned, we're going to be doing that project. We did bid it. It came in over and above the monies that we had allocated as it was because of the change in code. There now has to be fresh, excuse me, it has to be tempered air coming into the space where before this code implementation, that was not a requirement. So, that bumped the project up about $12,000, $13,000, and that's something we'll cover with our operating budget. With the Mount Pleasant High School boilers, as we talked about, that project was a bid. It did come in over for a couple of reasons. One was the dual fuel going with both gas and oil, as we talked about earlier in the project, and the simple reality, I think that what you're seeing now are the increases in material costs and, to some degree, increases in labor costs on the job sites. I'm hearing that from many people across the board, that the days of static, no-cost increases are sort of behind us, and we're going to start to see progressive increases in things as we move forward. So, the sooner we build, the better, in reality. Concord High School, that weight room project is moving along. We had excellent cooperation from the city in moving the electrical line that served that building, and so that was done in literally a matter of days, and we were back underway with construction, so that was nice. Practice fields, as we've mentioned, are on hold probably permanently at this point. The Cabarrus Central High Electric Vault Project is finally completed. Got all the paperwork done. You won't be seeing that one on the to-do list at that point, next point, rather. The various school breaker panels, we, for some reason, I remember, it's hard to explain why a contractor wouldn't want to be paid, but we finally got the attention of the business office of Siemens Corporation, and they actually billed us. We assigned, we signed off on a portion of the payments this morning, and so that at least gives me good feeling about the rest of it. Once they get the paperwork in, we'll be able to get that project wrapped up and completed. And then finally, as we talked about, J. and Free's is going to move forward pending your approvals in the County Board of the Budget Amendments. We do have prices from the contractor to now to do roofing on all of the two roof areas of the building, so we will get new roofing material on all the wings and all the parts of the building. So, we should be in good shape, and that, all of this work should be done this calendar year, so we should be in good shape come April 1st of next year. Any questions?
Okay. Guess we'll start down with Mr. Schumaker for questions from Mr. Wickie.
No real questions, except when Ms. Clutch was talking about the monies moved, we were going to use those monies from the breaker panel project and from the hoods to cover the boiler project. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Ms. Carpenter?
Well, I'm kind of a stickler. Under food service improvements, your lines don't add up, 1,096, 367, then the next line over, you got 196, 368. They should both be the same, correct? Instead of 367, you got 368. Both of those lines should both be the same amount, right? See where I'm saying? 196, 367, and the other says 196, 368. It should be 367.
The first column she's talking about is the adjusted project budget and then paid to date for, under food service improvements.
Yeah, both of those, you're a dollar, both of those should be the same, right? Should be a dollar difference.
Yes, ma'am. We'll call it a rounding error. Yes, I think that's exactly what it is.
Yeah, but I mean, they both should be the same.
You're right.
Anyway, yeah, when I see a call, I like for the balance, anyway. There should be, those both should be the same, because if I'm not correct, five and two is seven, it's not eight, right?
Yes, ma'am.
You get the pass of proficiency.
All right, all right.
Okay, Mr. Walter. Good point.
Are there projects that we wanted to do that we're not going to be able to do now?
Probably the only one that's out there that I would take you to as being something we would, well, we would like to have done the fields, but the total cost for the fields was over $600,000, so that was sort of out of grasp at this point. And the same is true of the chiller projects at Beverly Hills. We are maintaining those facilities and/or that equipment. It's due for replacement, but we are also looking at doing some major changes to Beverly Hills over the course of time. And where we've, you know, you like to say, "Well, you could do that separately and not worry about it," but if you're going to be doing additions to the school, or if you're going to radically modify some of the existing buildings, you don't necessarily want to start messing with your chilling, your cooling capacity and all until you know what you've got to cool. So, I'm not feeling badly about the fact that we didn't do those projects. I would love to come back and do the fields. I would certainly like to make the cooling tower and the HVAC a portion of the new work that we do at Beverly Hills, but we don't have funds at this point to do either.
Okay, I think I understand.
Yep.
Mr. Harrison?
Maybe a few months ago, I suggested in an email to discuss finances of construction projects and construction projects kind of together, which I'm glad and appreciate that you're doing. I can get it in my head a little bit better, that you're opening up discussion about finances in the same context as the construction work that is dependent upon the finances. I hope this is not awkward in some way or another, but it helps me understand the money and the need and...
We really don't do much without Kelly's agreement.
Yeah, that's for sure. You think Carolyn Carpenter is tight with money.
Yeah, really.
But thank you very much.
Sure thing.
Great. And Mr. Phillips?
Yeah, so, just to clarify things in my mind...
Both Kelly's, actually.
Right. So, on Kelly's sheet, if I understand it right, with the changes that we're going to be voting on shortly, the Northwest Cabarrus High Practice Fields Buildings will move to the postpone projects list, the one category below it, and then the Coltrane Web Kitchen Hood Modifications, that's going to move to the projects completed with other funds category, is that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That is correct.
Now, David brought up, you know, that he wanted to be able to talk about the construction projects all together. This, of course, is only the QSCB-funded projects. There's also several projects that got the one-time funds from the county this year. Could you just briefly give us an update of where we stand? Was it tennis courts and Field House, and was there something else?
Well, there's lots.
Okay.
But the largest group, there's five projects, and those are grouped as one in terms of the camera projects for five schools, to go in the order you mentioned. The tennis courts have been bid. They're just waiting for some kind of dry weather before. One of the difficulties with doing paving work is you really don't want to remove what you're working with at the moment until you have dry ground on which to start working. And so, they have simply, you know, they've worked with the fencing and all that. They're ready to do the paving work as soon as we get some dry weather. So, although we anticipated originally that we were going to be done in August, that might be possible if we get a drying out period. It may be pushed back, but we don't control the weather, obviously. So, and the contractor's raring to go, every time we come into one of these additional weeks of weather, he pulls the crew off and sends them elsewhere because he can't do anything else at this point. But we'll certainly continue to work with him to do whatever we can to get those projects going. Those are the tennis courts at Concord High School and Mount Pleasant High School. The Field House, we met with the architects and the school staff this morning, as a matter of fact. We're struggling with a project that just, on paper at least, costs more money than we have. We have asked the architect to give us a couple of budgets. He came up with what he called a slim line, slimmed-down budget, and that was just at about $500,000, and a fully expanded building at literally about $775,000. Neither of those projects are currently within the budget, and so, but some of the booster parents were there, and we will be working with the architect to establish certainly something that can be bid within the funds that are available, and that's our goal, is to do something, hopefully within the month of July, that we will come back to you with a recommendation as to how we would like to proceed on this. And everybody's been very helpful. The architects are at about 95% complete on the documents. It's more a question of what's included in that base bid versus what is going to be an add alternate for future work. So, that's what we've got to work through now. But we're, everyone's talking to one another, we're working together, and hopefully we'll get there very shortly. The camera projects, excuse me, are in design. They're, I should be, I should say, they're ready for bidding projects, bidding that work. We're advertising it this Sunday. We're going to have a walkthrough next couple of weeks, and then bids in early August, so hopefully we'll have something for you the second meeting in August. That's the tentative schedule at this point. The lock replacement, we are working through our legal counsel and lock manufacturers. We have a proposal from the lock manufacturer. We think we're going to accept that in terms of replacement of the locks, and we're arguing, not arguing, but we're negotiating over labor costs, but we're very close to working that out. The intent is, I had said July 1st was my cutoff date. Well, they gave me what I wanted in terms of the locks, now I've just got to figure out the labor part of it, but we hope to resolve that very shortly. And those will be in the schools before school begins.
Question. All those cameras are all those stationary cameras?
The majority of them are. There are some that are pan, zoom, and tilt, but the majority of them are fixed. There's just a wide... There's just a wide variety of types of camera lenses that are used. It was very interesting, I'll take a minute if you don't mind. The designer that we have working for us is Buford Goff out of South Carolina, and they're very well-known in the camera industry for the work they do. And one of the things that they were able to show the principals and staff was, if you put a camera in this part of the building with this lens, this is what you'd see. And it was very impressive. It really helped the school staff feel comfortable with the decisions that were being made. And it just shows what technology plays a role in all of our lives, and this is just the next step in what's available in terms of looking at buildings before they even get built. You know, you can take a walkthrough one. Well, they could show us before the camera was ever in place exactly what a person, you know, five foot down the hall at two hundred feet from this camera would look like in the camera lens. And that was very nice. So I think it's helped make a lot of good decisions about what cameras are being used and where they're being used, and also the quality of the lens or, you know, how wide an expanse you need to cover versus how narrow in corridors you need to be. So I think we should have a good quality system when we get done in each of the schools, and I think they'll be very satisfied with the results.
Thank you, Mr. Whitkey. And Ms. Harrison, you have another question?
Yeah, just very quickly. A few months ago, I also suggested, and I don't mean to suggest this, to increase the cost of the cameras, but I do believe it would be really wise to put some kind of protective mesh or cage around the camera so that it does not obscure the picture that it's obviously taking, but that it protects it from kids deciding to get creative with something that they can toss up in that direction. But again, to protect the investment of the cameras, I would again advise any kind of protective cage, for lack of a nicer word, around the camera.
I believe that we have, there's an actual box that they sit in with a clear portion of the lens.
Good, good.
You can always spray something like that, but for the most part, they're destruction-proof in terms of hitting them with things.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. I did forget one other project, if I'm...
Yeah, go ahead.
Just so I'm not remiss in that regard. There is the planetarium project, which the commissioners added to our list, and we are working, we're trying to connect with a design firm that would be able to put together a bid package for us. The commissioners asked us to do that rather than accept the services of the firm that has been maintaining similar planetarium equipment in the area. So we're in the process of locating one of those designers, and when we do, we will put the onus of responsibility on them and have them come up with the design documents necessary to bid the project. We're hopeful that that's going to get done by the end, I should say, the whole project will be done by the end of this year. I don't, it depends a little bit on finding this individual, because most of the firms, like in some industries, tend to sell product with what they're doing. And we're looking for someone who doesn't do that. We're looking for someone who will give us generic specifications. And I think I found him. I just, I'm kind of sharing voicemails at the moment, and I hope to connect with him later this week.
So do you think maybe by the time our August meeting rolls around, we'll have some sort of direction on where we're going with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Fantastic. Any other questions? Okay, well, before we move on, just because it's going to come back and we're going to vote on the budget, I just want to make sure, and you'll have another chance to ask a question if you don't have it, but does everybody understand on that, the QSCB list, we're taking the breaker panel money that's left and the hood money that's left, and we're moving it over to the boilers for Mount Pleasant High School? Okay, gotcha. Just wanted to make sure. All right. We'll move on to five point four. And Mr. Whitkey, are you staying or... You're walking the wrong direction.
That would be helpful. Thank you, Kelly. This is the aerial of what is referred to as the web field property. Can I use this mouse? What is not shown is the entire site, but the entire site sort of runs this way and then way down here, oops, off the screen into kind of a triangular area, and then back, back up this way, it includes, excuse me, it includes this portion of the land and along behind the Glenn Center. And actually wraps up alongside here and then comes back and collects the recreation center that the city operates. The thing that I wanted to point out is that the proposal, all the improvements to the land have been paid for by the City of Concord. We really don't own any of those elements. The rec center here, the ball fields, the bleachers, the outbuildings, the swimming pool, those outbuildings, excuse me, this building is ours, I believe, but the outbuilding, which is the locker rooms and whatnot for the swimming pool, all of that was paid for by the City of Concord. They happen to have a lease, I guess that somebody mentioned that they're in arrears, it's a dollar a year lease with us, but not getting too concerned about that amount of money. What they, what the city did do is they did have an appraisal done of the land and the buildings, and that was a document that is attached, and hopefully you've had a chance to look at that. In reality, the land itself, based on the values and assessments that the appraisers did, comes to a value of approximately two hundred and ten thousand dollars. And that's, in today's day and age, that's a real number. Years, five years ago, eight years ago, it would have been higher. There are some people that think that the value of land was somewhere in the range of fifty thousand dollars an acre here. Unfortunately, it's substantially less today, and they feel that somewhere in the range of twenty to thirty thousand dollars an acre is probably more appropriate for the land in the city in this area. And so the offer, I forget exactly, I believe it's just, I should have put that down, I believe it's just around eight acres of property. They're offering, or the city is recommending an offer of two hundred and ten thousand dollars to the board for the land. And one of the other things that we got, the way this was brought to us was it was a joint proposal by the city. The city is very interested in making more improvements to this property. However, they don't want to do that unless they have an agreement, a long-term agreement of a dollar, you know, a lease for a dollar a year. Or ideally, what they would like to do is buy the land and put the investment in, if they want to do new lights, they want to do upgrades to the buildings and parking areas. They have a long-range strategic plan for the property that they would like to realize. And they just don't want to do it if the arrangement with us is tentative. And so they're asking for something permanent, either sale or a long-term lease. We're interested in the sale from the standpoint that they are then willing to roll into this agreement. My next picture. We are working with the city to reroute a very, very large stormwater drain through the Coltrane Web School property. Right now, it runs under, and unfortunately, we don't have a, we didn't have a plan that showed everything, so I just said, leave the school off of this, but the school comes to about this point where the sea is on this plan. And then the rest of this land is ours up to this location, and then this portion of the striped area is actually owned by the City of Concord. The stormwater drain comes right through here, runs literally underneath the building, and then kind of skirts this piece of property and then runs all the way down through our land. We have to replace it. If you happen to have a utility on your property, you know that, at least in the City of Concord, you're the owner of that property. Once they've installed it, you become the caretaker of it. We are the caretakers of the storm drain. And because it's beginning to fail seriously in many areas, we've funded a project through our capital program to replace it, and that's been, that's probably three years old, I believe, two or three years old. We have it fully designed, it's ready to go, and the city is willing to roll this property, if you will, into our agreement as long as they get something back on the web properties. And that's the simple reality there. Mr. Hyatt and his associates, Mr. Hamilton of the city, feel that the county council, excuse me, the city council would be, you know, reasonably pleased with doing that as long as there's a resolution on the website, web field site, excuse me. And so, yeah, Coltrane Web Field, but there's, I think, a mutual working relationship here. They're trying to help us as much as they can to facilitate the relocation. We would desperately love to get that line out from under, actually, it's the web building. It is, it is a, currently, it's about a, I think, thirty-eight or forty-inch size drain, and the city wants to enlarge it, I believe it is to forty-eight inches. So it doesn't even suit their needs as it currently exists. And so we would be doing them a favor by rerouting it, and they're working with us to do that. I will, I will say that as we get, excuse me, if we get to this point and if we do reroute the line through here, we have to make a decision. We either run the line this way, straight through, and then come down, or economically speaking, we would like to run through this piece of private property. We're going to have to negotiate with that owner and see if they're willing to let us do that. So there, you know, this is sort of step two in the process. We have the design, we know where we want the route of the pipe to go. We do have two options. One is to remain on what was city property and our own land, or another possibility is to run through private property. And we'll continue to negotiate along those lines and bring that back to you once we resolve this portion of it.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll start with Mr. Phillips.
Okay, so this isn't on the action agenda, so what is the plan?
This is strictly a report, Mr. Phillips. We, the reason is, is that the city council has to really give their formal agreement or not.
Okay, so they, the city council has to vote to make a formal offer, and then we would vote to accept or reject.
That's correct, sir.
So this is basically just to kind of get a sense of the board's reaction to this straw man. Well, my reaction is positive. In these times, someone wants to pay us two hundred and ten thousand dollars to use something that they're already using? That sounds like a pretty straightforward thing to me. And, you know, I was over there visiting the Glenn Center, walking through with Dr. Kirk and the Cabarrus County Education Foundation, because they have their eyes on renovating that theater that's in the building. And I'm, my sense of it is that if we're going to take money from the taxpayers of the City of Concord, we should designate that money for something that will benefit the citizens of Concord. And so I would like to at least float the idea that we designate that money towards this renovation project, to kind of provide the seed money to get the renovation of the old Concord High School Theater underway.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Phillips. I apologize, I wasn't clear that this was information that we're trying to gather because there's a couple of different moving pieces, the city council, us, and then of course, ultimately what we do, if it involves property, the board commissioners has a say in. So anyway, that's where we are, and we will continue on with Mr. Harrison.
Thank you again, Mr. Whitkey. This being the historic area of Concord, if in that second scenario you ran the line through the property of the adjacent private property owner, would the historic association of Concord need to be consulted in some way or another? I mean, if you're doing it on our property, I presume not, but if you're trying to get better bang for the buck, so to speak, for a shorter line through that property, would you find yourself in negotiations, not just with the property owner, but also with the historic association of Concord?
I don't know. That's a good question. I was going to say that this is all below grade, so it's not going to have a visual impact at all once the grass grows back. It's interesting, we maintain this land per, with the owner's agreement, and the children are allowed to use it as recreation now, so we have a good working relationship.
Good relationship, okay.
Yeah, so that's, that's good. And I will say, my expectation is that there wouldn't be an objection because this is all below-grade work, so it's not something that would change the aesthetic at all.
And along with Mr. Dr. Phillips's comment, I would also wish that you could come back to us financially speaking with some potential projects where this two hundred and ten dollars, two hundred and ten thousand could be applied effectively to benefit that area.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Walters?
On the appraisal on page twenty-three, is that the diagram of the actual property? Because it's not, it doesn't include the school.
That is...
I don't know if you can pull that, can you pull that up, page twenty-three of the appraisal document?
Can you get that? Kelly, thank you. The problem is, twenty-three on here doesn't necessarily mean twenty-three in the book, but...
But that's the acreage it's highlighted in red, is that what we're talking about?
Well, I'm sorry, you're twenty-three on the screen.
On the PDF, yes, sorry.
Okay.
It doesn't appear to have a page number.
Seventeen is the book, is that the one you're looking at? Twenty-three on the PDF.
Seventeen is the area.
Seventeen is the book.
It is, it's eight point four four acres. Yes. One more, I think. And I think, that's the one you wanted, right? Come back, come back.
But it's the area, it's the area...
Yes, no, that's fine. Thank you.
But it is the area in the red that we were talking about here.
It is, that is the area.
So that other field, I guess there's a disc golf or something in that area that's not included?
Right. That blue area is actually the Glenn Center area.
Okay.
At one time, it was all one piece of property, so...
Okay. Ms. Carpenter?
And well, basically, you're talking about what you're talking about going before the commissioners. They have the right of refusal, is that what you're basically saying? Now, could they basically, when you get that right of refusal, they could say, yeah, I want it, and then then turn around and then get it and sell it to the City of Concord? And then take the two ninety?
Yeah, yeah, that's...
I mean, could that happen? I mean, but is that what you're referring to, because we have to offer it to them first, is that correct?
You do.
I mean, I thought that was the agreement, we have to offer it to them first.
The statute does provide, before we sell land, we have to give the county commissioners an opportunity to acquire it at fair market value. And if they say no, then we can do it. So they would have to offer fair market value.
And this is considered fair market value, is that correct?
Presumably. I mean, it's an appraisal that is designed to determine fair market values.
Oh, okay. But I mean, with this, and my other question is, do we, if we do sell this for the two ninety, in return, are we required to use this actually for capital projects, or can this money be used for anything? Capital? Okay, that's my other question. So it does have to be used for cap?
Okay. Mr. Schumaker?
That was the only thing that I wanted to make sure we clarified, is how the two-ten, actually, it's two hundred and ten thousand, but how that's going to be used, and it has to be restricted to capital use. So I have no other questions at this time. So basically, to sum it up, it looks like this goes to the Concord City Council, they have to shake the smoke over it, and then hopefully, if, do we have to do a resolution on the Coltrane Web property? Or do we have to do anything to say that we want to make that exchange as well? Because that's all a part of this whole deal, is the Coltrane Web property from the City of Concord, we cede over to them, the Glenn Center property as outlined in red, and that's all a part of the whole package deal, is that correct?
Yes, whether it has to be handled in that fashion or simply handled as two transactions, they're just saying they'd like to do it together. And there may be some good reasons to do it that way. I had a very brief conversation with Phil Munkel with Roma Carlisle, and he, you know, offered to get involved whenever we need him involved, but he... which is to, to indicate that it is available, and we need to run it by the board of commissioners as well.
Right, I, I think, Barry, what's going to happen, I mean, all of that legal paperwork's going to happen somewhere down the road. At this point in time, we're just giving, and, and based on the comments, it appears that, that we are giving the indication that we are willing to sit and listen and talk about moving forward with that type of proposal. But I, I believe Dr. Shepherd wanted to make a comment.
Just to tie into the idea of using the money for City of Concord, and particularly that site, I would say in, in our discussions with the mayor and the city manager, we made it clear that we had needs there, and that we would appreciate their support in, in helping us with that renovation, and that they were very interested in knowing, would we be willing to do just exactly as you've said? And in our discussions at that time, we talked about the fact that that building is not handicapped accessible, and that we could take the first step in making it handicap-accessible, and then we could begin using it, and perhaps then generate some more revenue by using it in interest. So our thinking is certainly in line with what I'm hearing from the board tonight.
Okay, so I guess just give me a quick nod of the head, that we're, we're giving the indication that we're willing to proceed with the, I'm not even going to use the word negotiation, but with the conversation of selling the property.
I have a conflict here, so I can't...
Okay, got you. Well, just, Ms. Monroe, if you'll note that Mr. Walter, as a City of Concord employee, is just, is, is going to abstain from that, that nod of the head. And we, and we appreciate that. Okay, got it.
Thank you very much.
So does that, does that help and get you going?
That does.
I, I, before, I tell you what, I jumped the gun. I never had made my comments. I'm used to just being right in line and saying, you know, and totally forgot. But I will say that I, I believe it was my very first year, within the first couple months, we talked about that, the, the failure of the storm drain pipe at Coltrane Webb. So it's been that long that we've been trying to get situated, and I believe we had some funds appropriated for it or to fix. So we have been working on that. But what I wanted to ask you, that, well, actually, not even ask, just make a comment, that I, I guess between now and the time in August, or whenever this moves forward, it'd be nice to know the, the, the private property piece, of whether, A, does it really help us? It doesn't sound, it sounds like they've already had the pipe designed, so they've got a sized pipe in mind, but if that takes an elbow out or something, I'm, I'm sure, but, but...
It takes one and possibly two structures out.
Okay.
That's what you're talking about.
Got you, got you. Well, I guess what we'd write, we'd need to know, then, was how much of a bite does that take out of the $210,000 to, to decide whether it's worth it or not?
Sure.
And the, the other thing that we would want to make sure is that any, whatever the field space that we give up, we may want to include in the negotiation of if we have children or students or anybody at the Glenn Center during the school hours, that we would at least have the right to use the fields. And not, you know, maybe not all day or after school or whatever, but at least during the, the school hours. And I, I can't imagine they would have a problem with that, but I just want to make sure we're up front with them to tell them that that would be our intention.
I would just say that I did, I keep calling him chief, but I did talk with Mr. Hamilton today and, and asked that, and he said certainly. We, we've talked about that many times along the way, and he said absolutely, we will do an MOU with you, memorandum of understanding between the two agencies, to ensure that that happens.
That's exactly what I think. We've got more questions. Go ahead, Barry.
On the private property, you know, you, you did mention that we do some maintenance on that property to keep it, so the children can use it, so we actually have some beneficial occupancy on it. If we were to run that line through there, all you would need is a right-of-way, so that the City of Concord could have access to the line. We would never need to buy the property, so it would be a very minute amount of a transaction to get that right-of-way. And that might be something we could talk with the homeowner, and they might just give us the right-of-way and not even ask us to pay for that, that portion of it.
Yeah, that's one of our avenues. That's a good point. I think we did talk about that earlier today. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, a storm drain easement, is what we would need. Jeff, you got something?
Yeah, I, when, when you mentioned that, you know, maybe we'd be making this decision in August, that popped back into my head. When, when are, when do we expect to receive the ORAD report, giving us recommendations on where we should be building new schools? I don't expect the recommendation to say, "Put it right there where the Glenn Center is," or maybe just south of it where the athletic fields are, but, you know, on the off-chance it would, it would look awfully bad to say, "Okay, we're going to sell it this month," and then a month later, come back and go, "Oh, I wish we hadn't have done that."
Good, yes. You know, we have early, early findings. I know Dave Burnett's working with them, and I would hope by sometime in, in late this month or early next month, we'll have something for you. I, I had a, I had a piece of a conversation with them about a week and a half, two weeks ago. They, they did look like they were certainly narrowing in and getting things ready to go, but it takes a while to pull that data together. So I was thinking about another month, we should be in pretty good shape.
Can I make a comment on that?
Yeah, hang on one second, Mr. Harrison had a comment.
Just to say the obvious that you're leading up to, that if, if, if that contingency could be formally discussed with the City of Concord in the agreement, that we do need to, to look at our ORAD numbers when they do come in, for the benefit of the whole county, that, that would be the only major thing that would be a consideration for us. Otherwise, I'm, I'm hearing a sense of the board that we're in general agreement with, you know, with this approach.
Okay.
But we do want to make sure we benefit all of Cabarrus County, according to those ORAD numbers, in which we've made an investment and want to immediately put to use.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. That's just information that, that we need to make sure we have. Mr. Schumaker?
Well, I, I got to sit in on a preliminary discussion with the ORAD, as they were trying to put together the, the presentation, and that was not one of our areas of, of need, or at least far as the growth component that we're looking at, that was not considered in that. It's not that they didn't say not build a school, because their direction was not to tell us where to build anything. It was just to tell us where the growth is, what the growth looks like, and, and how it's going to affect us in the future. So they really were not going to tell us what schools to be built or, or anything like that. But that was not an area that was pointed out as a high-growth area for us to deal with.
Okay, great. Well, there you have it.
Thank you, sir.
You've got at least some feedback that you're after, so thank you.
Right, no, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on, board members, to section 5.5, Board Vice Chair Comments. And I don't really have anything, other than I would like to wish our chairman safe travel as he's away, and hope everybody has a nice, happy, and safe Fourth of July. And with that, Dr. Shepherd, do you have your comments ready?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman. I'm pleased to announce that our child nutrition department's sponsoring and operating a summer meals program at sites throughout our county. The program offers free meals that meet federal nutrition guidelines to all children eighteen years and older, eighteen years old and younger, excuse me, at approved sites in areas with significant concentrations of low-income families. Additionally, Child Nutrition also is operating a mobile unit that stops in three areas of the community to provide meals to children who are unable to attend a summer enrichment program. This program runs from, through Friday, through Friday, excuse me, August the ninth, and information about locations for the summer meals is available on our district website. Also want to make our community aware that we've extended the application period for enrollment in our preschool programs. Children who are four years old may be eligible to attend, and in order to apply, contact the Head Start office at Long School, and that telephone number is 704-784-3614. Also, the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill Nutrition Research Institute is sponsoring a summer art and essay contest to celebrate its fifth anniversary. The contest is open to rising kindergarten through twelfth-grade students, and the theme is Carolina in Your Community. The entry deadline is August the second, and again, you can visit our website for contest details. Another announcement that our community would be in need of, perhaps, is that students can convert their good grades into discounts at one of our local stores, Music &amp; More. The store is offering student discounts of up to 20% for As and Bs on the students' report cards. For more information about the discount program, also visit our website. And finally, as we spoke of earlier, a reminder to our public that graduation, 2013 graduation ceremonies are now airing on Time Warner Cable Channel 21, and video recordings of the graduation ceremonies are also available on demand on our district website. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. We will move on. We do not have any guest speakers that have asked to speak, so we will move on to our action agenda, and ask Ms. Auger to the podium for 7.1.
Thank you. Good evening. We look forward to sharing with you tonight information on the program we offer our beginning One of our greatest joys in Cabarrus County schools is supporting beginning teachers, a term which includes teachers who are in their first, second, or third years. As 2012-13 concluded, we had 144 first-year teachers, 104 second-year teachers, and 102 teachers who were in their third year of teaching. While teachers have spent years preparing for this profession, many feel somewhat overwhelmed with the new challenges of classroom management, instruction, preparation, working with parents, professional development, and the list continues. In this quote, Corcoran expresses the theory that the large number of unknowns in early teaching is complicated by the need to appear competent and confident in the classroom. Our mission in Cabarrus County schools is to help our beginning teachers be prepared to meet these challenges that they face. A continuum of district personnel have teacher support as an important duty, and we extend our thanks to each of them. This includes our Personnel Director, Marion Bish, Teacher Support Coordinator, Teresa Abernathy, who has joined us in the audience this evening, principals and assistant principals, lead mentors, and mentors within the school. We begin our support of beginning teachers, or BTs, through a new employee orientation, which also includes our licensed support personnel, such as counselors and media specialists. First-year teachers meet for three days of district orientation, which is followed by two days at the school, meeting with the mentors, lead mentors, and administrators. The orientation occurs during the week prior to the first day for returning staff. Examples of sessions include policy information through a legal briefing and drug-free workplace training, finance, technology, and human resources on day one. On the second day, the focus is entirely curriculum. Day three includes a variety of breakout sessions tailored to their level on diverse learners and classroom management. Our business partners play a key role, providing meals, culminating on the last day with a complimentary luncheon by Carrabas with vendors and prizes sponsored by our Chamber of Commerce. Experienced teachers new to CCS, who attend day one and can come on days two and three, frequently comment on the outstanding nature of this orientation. One experienced teacher wrote, "I've been in two other school systems, and this is the most organized orientation experience I have ever had. I love how valued CCS makes the teachers feel out of the starting gate, and it encourages creativity." And comments from another, "All of the training has been wonderful. Thank you for pulling together so many fantastic sessions for us. Each session was important and informative." Oversight of the beginning teacher program resides in human resources. In addition to sponsoring orientation, the Personnel Director and Teacher Support Coordinator perform duties such as training mentors, meeting with lateral-entry teachers who may need special individualized support, and collecting the evidences of compliance for mentor contacts and observations. Since the spring semester of 2011, when mentor standards were updated, our team has trained more than 300 mentors. As other teacher leaders blossom, we offer mentor trainings during fall and spring semesters. School-based support is specified annually through building-level assurances. Assurances include, for example, that coaching is provided by the lead teacher and mentor, that the number and variety of class preparations will not exceed the staff average, and that beginning teachers will not be assigned extracurricular duties unless requested by the teacher in writing. Beyond basic requirements, principals personalize additional facets of support within the school. Dr. James Davis, principal, is here with us this evening. I'd like to invite him to the podium to briefly share how Wyancoff personalizes their support of new teachers.
I appreciate the chance from Ms. Auger and the board to share some things that we do at Wyancoff. Clearly, a focus of ours is the successful retention of beginning teachers in years one, two, and three. And what we've done is use the county initiatives as a springboard to do some non-traditional, outside-of-the-box things that, all the way from my time at Northwest Middle, and now to Wyancoff this year, has yielded each year a 100% retention rate of our beginning teachers in years one, two, and three. She's provided you with access to a document of what we call sixteen different ways that we support, train, and retain our new teachers. I'll highlight just a couple of their favorites. One of them is what we call making the grade at the end of each nine weeks, when beginning teachers are often struggling, just with management, with keeping up. Each of our beginning teachers receive a making-the-grade coupon, and that coupon says on there that teachers can turn it up to 150 papers or assignments, and an administrator or lead teacher will grade those for them. Some take advantage of it, some don't, but it sends a message that, one, you help us with our workload, and, two, you care about that relationship between the two of us. Another one that they've reported great success with is what we call workday assistance. And on half-days, early-release days, teacher workdays, each beginning teacher in year one, two, and three are assigned an administrator that comes to their room for a minimum of two hours. They create a list, organizing bookshelves, labeling books, cleaning, whatever it is. But again, just a non-traditional way to say, "You matter to us, we care about you, and we want you to be successful." We do a lot of one-on-one staff development. I take three teachers. We have a total of seven beginning teachers out of our 35 this year. I take three, our assistant principal takes two, and our assistant principal of instruction takes two, and we tailor a very differentiated plan of staff development for each one of those. Some of them choose book studies, some of them choose online, some of them choose face-to-face, but it's a one-on-one way to really differentiate what they're getting during those beginning years. One of the last favorites that they have is what we call a Christmas crate, and in December, whenever, if you've been in education, the pay period ends about 10 days before December 31st. So you get your paycheck early, and beginning teachers are always very excited. They've got that money early, it's Christmas time. What we do is, is we provide them with the Christmas crate and a reminder that says, "You now have six weeks instead of four, so be very mindful, you know, that you'll have to make that money spread out over six weeks." The Christmas crate is then filled with bread, and turkey, and fruits, and vegetables, something that they can take away, and kind of helps with that financial burden. You'll review the list and see that we do a beginning-of-the-year retreat, an end-of-year retreat. We offer them additional human resources, physical resources, monetary resources. They've got brag books in their room that stays on the back of their door, so that they've got a place where they have collective feedback, constructive criticism and praise that we visit with them each nine weeks. The bottom line is, back in 2006, when we started it at Northwest Middle, we told them, "We realize that the expectation is very high. If you ask us for anything along the way, if it's not illegal or immoral, we will say yes to it." We don't say that we can't afford it, we don't say that we don't have time. We say yes, and then we find a grant, or a sponsor, or the PTO, so that we can make it happen. The last thing I'll share is that they enjoy getting a half-day of professional development, specifically geared towards beginning teacher issues, and instead of spending the money on substitute teachers, we have a presenter, and then I, along with our administrative team, our lead teachers, our technology facilitator, and our site support specialist, take all seven of those classes and teach them ourselves, so that they get a half-day every month of professional development that's just tailored towards the issues that they're dealing with in their classroom. With that said, I'm happy to entertain questions, or again, just thank you for letting me share what we do at Wyancoff.
James, can I get you to stay up here with me? Why don't I go ahead and, I'll do the last four slides, and then make that open to any questions together, how's that? Okay. Let's go on to slide eight, and talk about the lead mentor and the mentor. The lead mentor and mentor provide personalized support. Ideal characteristics for the mentor include the same certification area, a sense of optimism for teaching, the ability to listen well, and the capacity to engage and... Let's go on to Slide 8 and talk about the lead mentor and the mentor. The lead mentor and mentor provide personalized support. Ideal characteristics for the mentor include the same certification area, a sense of optimism for teaching, the ability to listen well, and the capacity to engage in reflective dialogue that nurtures the beginning teacher. The mentor and lead mentor sign contracts guaranteeing their performance of duties and frequency of contact. Mentor standards for performance require that mentors support beginning teachers in each of the teacher evaluation areas. Also, each district office has a critical friend with whom their plan and compliance is annually shared. Union County is our critical friend. In addition, DPI conducts a full audit periodically. And here's a slide showing mentor training as the standards are being discussed. Each beginning teacher completes a self-assessment, which is discussed with the administrator, and creates a personalized professional development plan for the year. In addition to normal classroom walkthroughs, four formal observations of the teacher are required, one of which is done by a peer. For the formal peer observation, a different teacher is used from the mentor to protect the nurturing function of that teacher and his or her mentor in that relationship. A summary evaluation is completed at the end of the year. Whether we are discussing the learning of students or the learning that occurs with beginning teachers, as Abigail Adams states, "It is not attained by chance." We've attained and designed a layered and multi-tier plan to support our beginning teachers as they have worked toward a continuing license at the end of year three. Most importantly, we hope we fostered an environment of support, so our beginning teachers remain in the profession and ultimately become tomorrow's mentors. Thank you. And I love Dr. Davis's "we say yes." That's great. Do you have any questions for any of us?
Thank you, Ms. Augur and Dr. Davis, very much for that presentation. And we'll open up for board comments, and we'll start with Mr. Schumacher.
I can keep talking.
Here you go. I'll let you share mine.
Yeah, I just talked right to death.
They had too many on. All right, thank you, Carolyn. All right. I was really interested in your beginning teacher program, read every bit of it, and just, my hat's off to the way you try to welcome these new folks in and try to get them adjusted. You know, this is going to be a really different year in that, you know, Jason and his team have been really working hard on the Common Core curriculum, or adapting our curriculum to the standards. And is that going to be part of the mentor's job to help the new teacher adapt to the new format that's going to be offered? Dr. Davis, I don't know if you've seen some of the outputs that are coming out, but you know, in the Common Core curriculum, or the Cabarrus County curricula, there are references to, you have to do certain things and find literature and stuff to do it, but now the teacher is going to be under their, under pressure to figure out what they want to integrate into the learning of the child and how they do that. And I just wonder how you're going to help them understand what they have available to them resource-wise, so that they can put together really good daily lesson plans and that type of thing to adapt to this curriculum.
I think to answer your question, the lead mentor and the classroom mentor does play a big part in it. This year and continuing into the fall, we have lots of coaching sessions where mentors and lead mentors are actually in the room with the teacher, delivering lessons, whispering in, telling them how to move things forward, how to focus on student achievement and the Common Core. In addition, we've got an online book study taking place in July with our beginning teachers, one, two, and three, that's just a better understanding of the Common Core, how to use it, how to use it as a springboard for additional student success. Short answer is mentor, lead mentor, one-on-one PD, that is how we're addressing it at Wincoff.
Okay. And, but each school will have their own flavor of how they address that particular thing.
That's correct.
Now, will each school also be doing what Dr. Davis is doing in July? When do the, when do the new teachers actually begin employment is a question that I have.
So the new teachers definitely will be present by the week before most teachers report, and that is the week of orientation, where they spend three days with the district, and then they do have two full days at the school where they work with their mentor, lead mentor, and the administrators before any of the other teachers return.
All right. And on the mentors, the mentors is a voluntary position, is that correct?
It is voluntary, and we owe a great deal of thanks to them. They are selected for particular characteristics. There used to be mentor payments that were made monthly for these positions, and that was a part of the state budget and some federal cuts that went by the wayside. Where possible, we try to swap some time out for them if they're coming in special days before their time even starts. But they do so much work during the year with our teachers, and we owe a great deal of thanks to them for that.
And do the mentors participate in the professional development days? You know, I noticed that, at least in yours, I don't know if all the schools do what you do, but that would seem like a vital piece to their development is to have time where they could spend with the mentor.
I can't say they have very close contact with them. We require for a mentor to work with the mentee at least once a week, and when I was looking at some of the survey results, the most common response is daily contact and support. So you see a lot of work between the mentor and the mentee.
And you brought up that Union County is like our...
Critical friend.
And as a critical friend, what are they criticizing, or what are they critiquing?
So, and Teresa might, would you like to come up here and talk about that? Teresa heads that up, and it's massive.
I would think.
Good evening. I don't know that I can give you specifics without that document in front of me, but in 2010, when the standards changed for mentors, and the professional teaching standards changed, which is what triggered the whole effect, the district then became involved. When we explain this to mentors at training, we talk about it as a PLC, Professional Learning Community for Districts. So basically, what happens is, we get together with Union County, the folks in their district who hold my position and Dr. Bish's position, and we talk about just what our program entails, what we do, changes that we make from year to year. And then we just talk about how that works in our district versus how it might or might not work in theirs. Union County, for instance, has, one of the things that they do very differently is they have each school come up with a written plan that is submitted to the district office. That doesn't work for us. While Dr. Davis does what he does at his school, we still all abide under the guidelines that Kathy presented to you. But everybody does it just a little differently, so we don't have written forms that come in, but we do have a sense of what happens through the documentation that we collect in our office. Don't know that that answers your question, but without those specific, there are six specific standards that each district looks at, and they're ranked pretty much like the teacher evaluation. We're either at developing, proficient, accomplished, or distinguished. It's really just a self-evaluation of your program is pretty much what we're looking at.
But you would say that each of these schools that has some flavor of those six elements in it, and has something similar to what Dr. Davis has, so that even though you don't have a district-wide step-by-step, how, this is how we take care of our, our beginning teachers, this is, each school has a flavor of a document similar to that, to what he has.
Yes, sir. And, and one of the things, one of the things that's coming to mind as we're talking is, one of the standards is about a systematic selection of mentors. One of the first things is, are your mentors paid? Well, the state doesn't support that anymore. They, they ask for it, but the districts can't do that. So one of the things is looking at how mentors are selected. In our district, as there are in most districts, that responsibility lies upon the principal. They are the people who know staff, and who know the best fit for the new teachers that will be coming into their doors. That's something we would not know. But it, it does walk you through that, and yes, we do have a sense of how that works at each school, based on the lead mentor. Many of them have been in that position for a number of years, and then the administrators within that building. So we do have a sense of that, yes, sir.
Okay. And there's, so at a district-wide level, there's a comprehensive list or matrix that shows all the beginning teachers, all the mentors associated with each of them, and the schools.
Yes, sir.
And then the, then the lead mentors.
Yes, sir. We keep that from year to year for the audit purposes that occur every five years, but then just for our work in our office, just to make sure that documentation and compliance happens.
So you have an audit process that...
Every five years through DPI.
Reviews how you, how you perform this activity.
Yes, sir. Two years ago, I think it was, year before last.
Okay.
It was our last one.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Carpenter.
Uh, Dr. Davis, one question, and I want to make sure I understood. Did you say basically that you're, that you, and also your AP, went in and actually taught in the classrooms?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Congratulations. I'm proud of you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm glad to say, about how many hours do you actually teach in the classroom?
It varies, but probably at a minimum, we have those seven teachers, and we each take one, and that's a minimum of once a quarter that we go in. Now, again, we're very purposeful and very individualized. You know, there are times where we do co-teaching, there are times when we go through a multitude of coaching strategies that we've been trained as group of principals, and then sometimes that we just go in to teach.
That is great. I am so glad to see that. I was just reading an article just a couple of weeks ago, and, I mean, it's unfortunate. I hope we never get to this point, but up in some of the northern states, I mean, they have, they've, they've done away with the APs, they've done away with the, the nurses, they've done away with, I mean, it's unbelievable. But, and the other question, I won't get into that because, I mean, it, my hands were shaking as I was reading the paper when I was seeing this. But one of the other things with, how do you think it's going to affect your new teachers, especially this year, when, what we're looking at, or what we, with the, the teacher's assistants? When these new teachers are coming in, and maybe coming into the kindergarten and the first grade, and they're new, they're coming in, and they don't have these assistants, possibly. I don't know how many teachers' assistants you have had in your school, but what is your plan, or what are you going to do if you don't have those teachers' assistants in those classrooms?
I think, I definitely think that's a hardship, you know, not to have those folks in there. I think the beginning teachers are up for the challenge. I think that the greatest, you know, percentage of our teachers, and probably other schools, have teachers that really step up and do what's best for kids. So while often it's, it's easier to have somebody that's serving as an interventionist, that's pulling some of your at-risk populations, I think that we're just looking for new ways to do that, as we redefine the roles of our lead math teacher, our lead literacy specialist, even our technology facilitator, as we choose our focus areas, as we're more purposeful with scheduling. I think they're up for the challenge. I think it will be very, it'll be very different, you know, but again, I do think they're up for the challenge.
Do you think this is where your mentors are going to be playing an even bigger role than what they've played before? I mean, really, this is, this is where the rubber meets the road, to maybe put it, and maybe where this role that you've said you and your APs have been playing, that this, where you maybe really are going to have to step up more than you've ever stepped up before?
I think the mentors are crucial, and I do think that they'll play a big part in, in that experience with beginning teachers. I think that everybody's probably looking for outside-of-the-box ways, and we've chosen, Wincoff really does have three teachers at heart, so it's not a hardship to say that we want to be in the classroom, that we want to be co-teaching. So that's one way that we've chosen to, I guess, close that gap with some of the TA roles.
Well, I want to applaud you so much, that I've looked through this list, and what I'm seeing that you're doing, you're really setting an example for our system, and I just want to applaud you, and seeing the things you're doing, that is just excellent. And I want to thank you for such a wonderful job.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Walter?
Thank you. Um, I think it's great that we're partnering with the PTOs, and they see a value of that, want to contribute to the new teachers, and that says a lot to you and your program. And our goal, how many, again, how many beginning teachers do we have?
This past year, we had 144 in their first year, 104 in the second year, and 102 in the third year. And that entire group is called beginning teachers until they get a continuing license at the end of that third year.
And our goal is 100% retention? How well are we doing?
I'd say we are generally always above, better than the state average.
Well, we have a program here that seems to be working.
And we do have a program that seems to be working.
It'd be nice to be able to repeat that, or at least something very, very similar to...
Teresa and I have talked extensively about having Dr. Davis be one of the people who meets with our lead teachers and our lead mentors. I'd also like to say, he's not the only principal who has an excellent mentor and mentee program. He's one that we selected this evening, but many principals do an excellent job.
Well, I appreciate you coming and sharing. My only question, this is an annual program, was there some specific change this year that you didn't have last year?
Annually, we must present this to you as our plan. We want to be sure that we always have all of the contracts in place, the assurances in place. Two years ago was when we really had major changes in terms of the standards. We're primarily bringing this to you this evening, much like Title I, Title II, there is a sign-off that must occur by state statute annually.
Okay, so it's basically, it's basically the same program as last year?
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Mr. Harrison?
Ms. Boone will be proud of me that I'm using her website, so I've gone to Wincoff's link there, and I can see that your assistant principals both went to Appalachian, which pleases Dr. Shepherd and myself very highly, so you cannot help but be successful, I gather, with that talent.
I have a master's from there also.
Oh, I beg, I stand corrected. We, we need to talk. At some opportune time in the future, I think the board would be well-advised to be presented with the trends of those audits in the past. If you do this yearly, I'm just speculating, I don't know what the timeline is, but if the board could have any input after reviewing those audits before the process begins, it might be beneficial to us. Historically, you may already have done that in the past, I don't, I don't know that for certain. I know I would just like to be informed of the audits prior to...
Certainly.
...the, the process of formulating these plans.
The formal DPI audit occurs once every five years, so we did do that year before last, so it'll be a few more years. That, that was a very positive audit for us. I believe we shared probably some information in the, in written information to the board at that time, but I'd be happy to share that. Also, we can share information as we have our critical friend discussions.
Again, thanks for great success. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. And before we go to Mr. Phillips, we've got to take just a brief break to change the video.